Welcome to the May 2nd, 2024, meeting of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. I'm going to ask everyone on the dais to introduce themselves.
Chrissy Rishel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summeral-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Alito, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. We start every meeting with a silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join us in silent prayer. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second?
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summeral-Dumas?
Yes.
We have two special presentations. Today, I'm going to start with the presentation recognizing Building Safety Month. And I'll read the proclamation. We will all read it. Proclamation honoring Building Safety Month, whereas Hamilton County is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depend on the safety and essential role that our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike.
And whereas our confidence and the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigil and guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment and collaborate to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas, these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, and earthquakes.
And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities, largely unknown protectors of public safety, and our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, mission possible, the theme for Building Safety Month 2024 encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us for local, state, and building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property.
And therefore be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Commissioners, on behalf of its residents and the entire community, hereby extend its deepest gratitude and appreciation to the Hamilton County Planning and Development Department for their contributions to Hamilton County and steadfast commitment to ensuring that all county buildings are safe and sustainable. Be it further proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim that May 2024 be known as as Building Safety Month in all of Hamilton County.
Thank you, Commissioners, and good afternoon. James Neuss, Director of Plan and Development. I have with me today some of those very important folks that are on the front line every day promoting building safety, but also making sure our buildings and structures are safe in Hamilton County here. Today, I have Chief Building Official Mike Stalen. I have Plans Examiner John Hester. Also with us are our permit tech, Senior Permit Tech Michelle Gibson, and Permit Tech Becky Witterstatter. I think I've got everything right? I did. Thank you. ICC is the organization, as you read through there, a very important organization. They're the ones who develop the standard codes, which all codes are based on. The Ohio State Building Codes are based upon the ICC Codes. They develop tests for which all of our certified employees are required to pass. And they're very involved in making sure that we promote building safety as of the Building Safety Month here. So we really appreciate you recognizing May as Building Safety Month. As I said, it's mission possible. First month, the first week theme is about education and understanding that mission and getting out to the public how important it is to make sure that people understand building safety, how important that is again. So we're here today to help educate, to make sure that people know when they build structures, build buildings, you know, to make sure they get their permits. And from that point, they have a professional certified crew to come in and help, you know, from that standpoint, make sure it's safe. We're not just building officials. We're obviously fire officials as well, making sure that the buildings stay safe as well. So fire codes are part of ICC's recognition. So again, it's very important to obviously honor those that are out there trying to make sure that our buildings and structures are safe here in Hamilton County. And again, I thank you very much. It's very important that we help educate and recognize Building Safety Months. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to our Commissioners, but I want to have your staff stand, please, and be recognized. Thank you. I'll open up Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Neuss, for being here and accepting the proclamation. Thank you to the team that's in the back for attending as well. This is one of those things that I think kind of goes unnoticed often when it comes to building safety, something we all rely on every single day. And yet, we, it deserves the attention of having a month to remind us about the building safety standards that you all enforce and that you're protecting us really, especially with an aging building stock like we have here in Hamilton County. It's really important that we've got, as it says, guardians kind of keeping an eye on things. So thanks for what you're doing and really proud to proclaim the month for the, for the. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you so much. I am so proud. I just, when I think about how important issues or items or people are, you think about where would we be without building safety? If someone just went into a building and no one was there to give permits or to make sure we're doing things right. And so you guys are very important in the grand scheme of all the things that we're doing. So thank you so much.
Thank you for everything that you do. And Director Neuss, he, one fun fact, he loves hip hop like I do. So we say, bring the noise. So y'all can say that when y'all at the job, bring the noise. So, okay, great. We're going to present this proclamation. If you all come up right here, we'll come around and take a photo. All right, we have another presentation. Recognizing National Small Business Week. And we'll read the proclamation. Proclamation recognizing National Small Business Week. Whereas, the resilience of American small businesses continues to drive America's strongest economic growth in almost 40 years, fostering the competition and innovation that creates opportunities for families, workers, and neighborhoods.
Whereas, small businesses are the backbone of our communities and the American economy, employing more than half of our nation's workers, enriching our main streets, making parts and products in America to fuel our supply chains, building our nation's infrastructure, and innovating and inventing the products of tomorrow. And whereas, the historic investments made through Presidents, the President's American Rescue Plan, Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, CHIPS and Science Act, and Inflation Reduction Act are ensuring small businesses can access federal capital support, technical assistance, contracting opportunities, and other resources to help lead the way as we rebuild America's roads and bridges and build a clean energy economy for the future. And whereas, when we support small businesses, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture and enjoy new opportunities to build generational wealth. And whereas, entrepreneurship continues to be one of the best pathways to the American dream, evidenced by the historic small business boom, with a record 16.5 million Americans applying to start a business since January 20th, 2021, including 5.5 million last year.
Whereas, by renewing our commitment to supporting small businesses, we can maintain our global competitiveness and build a stronger nation where everyone can succeed from the bottom up and the middle out. And whereas, the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas, the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners supports and joins in this national effort to recognize the contributions of small businesses to the American economy and their importance in ensuring that our local communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today.
Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, on behalf of its residents and the entire community, hereby extend its deepest gratitude and appreciation to the U.S. Small Business Administration for their contributions to Hamilton County and unwavering dedication to supporting all small businesses. Be it further proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim that April 28th through May the 4th, 2024 be known as National Small Business Week in all of Hamilton County.
President and Commissioners, thank you so much. My name is Everett Woodell. I'm the District Director for the U.S. Small Business Administration. With me today?
Terry Bolden. I serve as the Deputy District Director.
We just want to thank you. The importance of our small businesses as the federal agency that represents 34 and a half million small businesses across the nation, and in Ohio, 889,000 small businesses. So we wanted to thank you in helping us celebrate and recognize, and in particular, the Hamilton County small businesses. They are such an important part of the economic engine and of our economy. And one statistic I like to throw out there to better amplify how important small businesses are, eight out of 10 new jobs are created by entrepreneurs and small business owners. We love our corporate partners, but if you think about those numbers, it really, we really need to make sure that we sustain our small businesses and recognize and celebrate what they do for our economy. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bolden, did you want to add anything to that?
One thing I will say, and it's all about accessibility and visibility. And being here in Cincinnati, one of the greatest ecosystems, as we know, across the entire state of Ohio, it is an honor and pleasure to partner with the Hamilton County Commission. And also kickoff, we do understand that there is a program on May the 20th, part of your small business commitment. We're proud to partner for that event as well. So again, thank you for your leadership and support for, for the SBA and continued hard work to help our small businesses recover, grow, and expand. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to open up Vice President Dreehouse.
Thanks. Thanks for being here. It's a pleasure to recognize this one as well with Small Business Week. You know, the small businesses in this community, in and every community, make them unique, distinct places where people want to go. When you think about all the small businesses that are throughout our entire county and what they bring to the 49 jurisdictions in which they reside, it makes the community special and it, you know, and it provides jobs for people that live in those communities. And so we at Hamilton County have invested in small businesses throughout the years through Alloy in particular. Right? There are incubator and through the Port Authority and through Ready Cincinnati, who is always trying to attract businesses, large and small, into our community. So we are thrilled to be in partnership with you. As I was just telling our guests, I was a small business owner back then. Right? I owned a coffee house, so some of the times I do wonder. But anyway, coffee house and a swim club. So, but you know, those two small businesses were part of the fabric of that community. And so that just speaks to the importance of what the work you do, and we're glad to be in partnership with you.
Commissioner, we, well, we are truly grateful for the proclamation. We were here in Cincinnati today at Alloy, where there was a resource fair, where dozens and dozens and dozens of small businesses came in and met with all your resource partners. ECDI was there, the city. It was actually a great environment. So while we appreciate the proclamation, you know, we were here also interacting with those small businesses during National Small Business Week.
Great. Commissioner Dumas?
Awesome. Thank you so much for being here. And I always say, you will probably hear it again, that there's nothing small about a small business because after all, they form and create the middle class. And where would we be without the middle class? I also have a small business. So I'm just really happy about being able to recognize a small businesses this week.
Thank you. I wanted to say it's great to have you all here. I want to also acknowledge Amber Twitty, who has been involved with small business many years and is with the Central State Agriculture component, trying to show how to have small businesses agriculture. And for me, it's almost like a reunion because Terry Bolden and I were at the state of Ohio. And he was making history. We need, we, we need you at the SBA, but we also need you back at ODOT again. But in, at ODOT, it was a time where there was no inclusion, small businesses, minority businesses. I was President of Ohio Legislative Black Caucus at that time. The state was doing about 1%, 1.9%. And we were able to come together in a bipartisan way. We had a Republican Governor Kasich, and I'm a Democrat. And we were able to come together and have some major things that really happened. We went to 20% for minority businesses on goods and services, the highest in the state's history. ODOT developed a new program that Terry Bolden put in place. They even had a Martin Luther King event now that continues, and they're doing scholarships for kids at Central State. Martin III came in, was the keynote speaker. We did the Martin Luther King Highway Exchange, MLK I-71. That was something that would have been 30-plus years without doing it. But we were able to come in and I told the government, we got to move now. And Terry was very involved with that, with ODOT. And it's saving lives. It gets people to the hospitals quicker. And UC has been able to develop technology jobs and small businesses around it. I believe the building is 1819 or whatever it's called. But it wouldn't exist if, so just like you said, it's an ongoing process for small businesses. We're very excited. One initiative I'm very excited about and my colleagues support it, we now have an Office of Small Business. And Alloy is the group that's leading that, and Greg Forte. And as now, we extended that office. And then we have a Small Business Day, which we did for the first time last year, where 1,000 businesses showed up. We have been very active in grants to small businesses. We've done almost $20 million in ARPA grants to keep these small businesses going. So we've got a lot of stuff that we're, that we have done and that we are doing, and we can't do it without that partnership. This new product that we're going to roll out on May 20th, I want everybody to be there. If you're interested in owning your business, not only just the business, but the property, commercial, you need to be here at this event because what we're getting ready to roll out is historic, and it's going to be a great partnership with the SBA and Alloy. So, and I don't think any other place in Ohio has it. So, yeah, when you go to your next stop in Columbus, you tell them they don't have it in Columbus. They don't have it in Loveland.
And Alloy is a great partner. You're a mutual partner, correct? I mean, they are one of our largest 504 lenders in your economic development, and they are amazing partners.
So we got to, we did take a picture earlier, but we do want to present it to you. But I want to put the flyer up for people. They could come and meet folks from the SBA and everything else with our Office of Small Business Day. That's the date. I don't want any small business say, we left behind. I didn't know it. That is the date. That is the time. And it's not a leaflet fair. It's a fair to do business because that's my biggest thing, coming out of a family that raised me on small business. Small business is commerce. It's not a nonprofit. Its goal is to make a profit. And so we look forward to having you guys there. So congratulations. We'll give you the.
And Commissioner, if I could add one thing for all of the Commissioners, one thing you'd mentioned about Columbus, because it's, it's a legacy thing. It's called a Columbus District Office. We actually, last year, actually requested that our name be changed to the Central and Southern Ohio District Office. That is truly who we represent from Findlay all the way down to Cincinnati and from Indiana to Pennsylvania and all of Appalachia. So we have a huge district, and we thought that was more fitting of who we are and the work that we do across the state of Ohio.
That's exciting because I saw your National Director Guzman at the National Action Network convention. And I went up there and said, we need, we need our name on something down here. So anyway, that's good to know that you have a name that, you know, I'm always saying, what about us, right? So that is great to know. That's great news. You know, we always have a friendly rivalry with Columbus.
Understood.
All right, we got to take a picture. Thank you. And thank you all. You have to go, you understand. But thank you for coming.
Kim Lipensy, Sims Township. I would like to speak on the one item you have on the by leave, on the very back of the agenda. On, I think it was April 3rd, you all received an annexation petition from the City of Loveland to annex 47 acres in Sims Township. On April 16th, our attorney delivered a, hand-delivered a letter to all three of the Commissioners to ask that you hold off the maximum 45 days to make a decision on this annexation. So last, I guess it was Monday, it wasn't on the agenda, and today it appeared on the agenda. So we were just wondering, on behalf of my board, we were just wondering what the hurry is. And then we would like to reiterate if you could wait until May 16th, the full 45 days. We are in discussions with the property owner to buy a piece of property that's inside this annexation, and we would like time to talk to the property owner.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up to Mr. Ludo and I. Terrible, and I still have it, terrible two-day. So we did not get to meet today, I mean, meet this week. Can you update it?
Yeah, so just a brief update. So this does relate to the only by leave that the board has on, on the agenda today. So the, the issue is, is an annexation proposed from Sims Township to Loveland. This is a type 2 annexation under the Higher Revised Code that has a very express timeframe with it. And Ms. Lipensy indicated correctly that the, the start of that timeframe, I think we're all in agreement on, is being April 3rd. I think the, the difference of opinion perhaps and the cause for it being on by leave for today relates to what happens after the time with which a jurisdiction files an objection related to the annexation or not. So in this case, there was a 25-day period for an objection to be filed. The board did not, the clerk did not receive an objection formally. And it's the opinion of the Prosecutor's Office that at that point in time, a certain time, there are, there are a couple of different timelines expressed within the code. But the prosecutor is of the opinion that the timeline that holds in this particular case is that the board pass a resolution granting the, the annexation on the next business day, the next board meeting after that objection period were to expire. So I think I've explained that as clearly as I can, Charlie. So I don't know if, from the Prosecutor's Office, if you want to fill in any gaps there.
Yes, well done, Jeff. I, I can get more detailed in the explanation if the board would like. But yes, the, the timeline for the 45 days would be triggered with an objection being filed. No objection was filed.
Forty-five days from April 3rd, is that May 16th?
So ma'am, the Section D, within 25 days after the petition is filed, April 28th in this case, will be the timeline for an objection. If the objection was filed, then we would be looking at between 30 and 45 days from the petition. Because nothing was filed, that is deemed to be consent under the statute. And as such, the board, at its next regular session, shall enter upon its journal a resolution granting the proposed annexation. Is our read of the statute.
Okay, we didn't have an objection at first. We just want time to negotiate with the property owner to buy a piece of property that would eventually be in a city where we don't want to be in. So that is why we're asking the board to hold off on their decision. And we did ask the board through a handwritten letter on August, or I'm sorry, April 18th.
Okay, so.
April 16th.
Okay. One second. I want to make sure the handwritten request, that does not, you have, I guess, what you're saying is we have, you have to object in order to slow it down. Is that correct?
Correct. In order to get to subsection E, you would have to, the township would have to adopt and file a resolution objecting to the proposed annexation. That's what the statute reads.
Within 25 days?
That is within 25 days.
If that's the case, why was it not on the agenda on Monday, but today it's on the agenda?
Hold on one second. Commissioner Dumas, you had a question?
Yeah, but I was just going to see if you wanted to answer her question.
It wasn't on there, Mr. Ludo. It wasn't on.
It was added at the last minute.
Yeah, I think this was, this was added to the agenda, I think, upon conversations between the clerk and the Prosecutor's Office on the appropriate timing.
Where the calendar goes, it would be the 28th was the 25th and final day. That was Sunday. So the next meeting is today. That's, that's why it appears on the by leave.
Okay. Let me open up Commissioner Dumas.
I just wondered whether, was there a conversation between the Prosecutor's Office and the lawyer who asked us initially to, to hold it? Was there any conversation between the lawyer that sent the request to hold it with the Prosecutor's Office? Did you guys reach out?
I'm not sure of the office. I have not had that conversation.
Mr. Ludo?
No, the administration did not have any conversation with the, the attorney of record.
No, the administration did not have any conversation with the, the attorney of record for the township on this, no. Again, the, 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 the prescription of the ORC is, is fairly clear in terms of the, um, uh, regardless of the timeline, on, um, these types of annexations, which were created expressly to facilitate the annexations occurring. Um, and in this particular case, I believe even if there is an objection filed, the objection has to be, um, related to, um, one of the, uh, the issue specifically prescribed items of the Ohio Revised Code, um, a specific section of, 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 um, this part of the statute. So, if you're going to object, it has to be, uh, when we had, uh, Engineer Beck run to ground the, the various checks that the engineer's office has to do. He checks to make sure all of those things are correct. Um, and those are really the things that can be objected to, so.
But I think what we try to do, usually when we do stuff, we always say, what is, what's going on in the community? I got what you're saying. But we did receive these letters from the lawyer. And usually when we get letters from lawyers, I know my staff, we turn it over to your office to see. And then you usually turn to the prosecutor. My point is, with something like that, I know that they have to do a resolution. Did anybody pick them up and say, hey, we got this, but you guys gotta do a resolution, I guess? Or do they already, why didn't you do a resolution? I guess I'll start with that.
Because we were in negotiations and talking with the property owner about purchasing the property. So, we didn't feel we needed to object. We just wanted to intercede and possibly potentially buy the property to stop the annexation, I guess.
Well, I think that's one of our, our issues. Uh, yeah, you'll get clarity. One second. Did you, you, I.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I was just gonna say, just as a matter of courtesy, I mean, if we had talked to the lawyer who sent the initial letter, we might have known about what was going on as far as trying to deliberate. Yeah, I know you have a timeline and all that, but I think as a matter of.
Commissioner, uh, so when we received that letter, we did speak to a trustee of, of Sims Township. Um, to, and, and in fact, um, to your point, as a matter of courtesy, there was an item, I forget, uh, whether it was just logging it into the, this was scheduled to go on the agenda at a specific time. And I think we held it off the agenda, um, that, that one time, then put it back on, um, later, so, um. Uh, but that's not the same item that's on today, which is the granting of the resolution. So, um, so no, we, we, as a matter of course, we do not typically reach out to, uh, to counsel, uh, on these types of things. But we did have a conversation, uh, with, with one of the trustees of, of Sims Township on it.
Okay, um, like, yes, the prosecutor.
One more point in section A of the, uh, of the code that's applicable here. Um, it explicitly states that owners who sign the petition that starts this whole ball rolling, by their signature expressly waive their right to appeal and law or equity from the Board of County Commissioners entry of any resolution into this section. So, we would argue that once this was signed, then it was progressing and a transfer would, would, I'm not sure what effect that would have. I don't believe that would have an effect.
Okay, Vice President Drehouse, you want a clarification?
Yeah, I, I'm wondering, um, you said you're trying to negotiate related to the property. Um, there was no objection filed, and so here we are. Um, does, uh, can, can the negotiations continue?
We would like for them to continue. Uh, we just know that there's no way physically possible for us to buy a piece of property within that 45 days. Because obviously a government has to do their due diligence when they buy a piece of property. So, it would probably take us another couple of months to make that happen.
But I guess my question is, if you were, um, negotiating for the property, you've, I'm, I'm just wondering, if, if we take action, you can still do that. Um, I, I'm wondering what the difference is because.
Because then it would become annexed and we don't, we don't wish to own property inside a city.
So, what would it, if you had objected, uh, what would you have wanted to, to take this parcel out of what was being proposed?
Uh, possibly.
Okay, so, yeah, I just, we're in a bit of a spot here, uh, because there's no objection.
There you.
So, I, I, you know, I feel badly about it.
It is what it is.
I, I'm not sure. I, I've, given the read of the ORC, I feel like, I personally feel like we don't have much leeway.
Understand.
Because the, the process was, um, in motion and there was no delay there. So, I feel like by the read of the ORC, we don't have much of a choice here. I regret that the negotiations didn't, you know, or the objection wasn't filed, uh, and the negotiations will be more complicated now, it sounds like. That's what I was trying to get at. You know, what does that, so, thank you.
Yeah, fortunately, I think ORC got us. And, uh, you said you talked to a trustee at Sims Township, right? Trustee?
I did, just, sorry. I, I did, just to, uh, generally about the process, um, at the, at the beginning when this, when this was filed. Um, not, not in advance of this item going on today, though. I just wanna be clear about that.
Okay. Well, uh, Commissioners, I think the ORC has us. We apologize.
All right, I appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you. Uh, hopefully we can do a better outcome next time. Okay.
Commissioner, uh, I just didn't know, uh, Mr. Anderson was asking if he wanted to wait for this on the by leave or if he wanted to, uh, advance it now.
I was gonna advance it now, so we already talked about it. Um, I'll make a motion reluctantly to approve by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Our next speaker is, uh, this is Ms. Webster.
Sometimes we don't know to ask the proper questions. And that's how we get sucked into a loophole like that. That you had an agenda already regardless of whatever the clause was that y'all was taking the whole property anyway. Y'all left her with false dreams and aspirations to think that she even had the possibility to get a piece, when she didn't. Regardless if they would have filed the motion, you already had it in the clause to do that. Y'all be so wrong with that. But anyway, I wanted to address the, um, community about, um, what does the community, what community do you guys serve? When we say the community, I'm hearing that very much off the whole conversation, everything, the community, the community, community. And I'm seeing the community, but I'm not seeing none of us in the community. My community is suffering really badly. And you just got, you, y'all have a building commissioner, uh, but it's the Building Safety Month. The Building Safety Month, y'all focus on building safety. But if the building safety is so bad, the structure is so bad. Um, I'm having a problem right now. And I try not to be very emotional when I come into these places, cause I want y'all to hear what I'm saying. And not take my anger for what, you know, what's on top of it. I want you to hear what I'm saying. Um, I was sweeping under my, um, couch today and I swept a mouse from, a dead mouse from up under my couch. And the dead mouse was, when I swept it again, was a whole bunch of maggots up in there. And I have called the health department and everybody about this whole situation. And I know for a fact that there is a meeting, and I've been doing my homework and my research and everything like that. I just wanted to come and address the issue to let you know the urgency, what the community is suffering about when it comes to housing. I know that the meeting is on the 7th at City Hall and I will be attending. I know that. I just wanted to come and say that much and just to hear what, what we go through as a people and as a land, is within the, um, laws with the tenant and landlord situations, even with the land and property. I do such a bad, a crooked job with that. It's so bad. We don't have no voice. We the people have no voice. And I'm standing here for we the people, for we do have a voice and we're gonna be able to stand about something. Somebody gotta hear this. Somebody do. So, another thing I wanted to address is about the sickle cell awareness, um, program. My son has sickle cell anemia SS. And I've been having a really bad week. He's been having a real bad time transitioning with the weather and everything like that. Um, it was coming into a point where, um, it, it was time for him, I guess, they wanted him to be discharged. But his pain is still at an elevated rate. I'm sorry, his pain was still at an elevated rate to where he needed to be getting pain medicine in the MAGA tool, where he needs to be under doctor supervision. However, he didn't need to have any fluids. So, in order for them to keep him in the hospital because he needs those medications for his pain, they needed to keep him on a, a slow drip to keep him in the building for medical and building code and purposes. So, I wonder how many sickle cell people are getting rehydrated or hydrated just for medical and building code and purposes when they only need to be, um, medicated for their pain. And this is a whole bunch of tip of a lot of what we have going on. And I, when I say, Ms. Alicia Reese, I don't see you enough in our community and us, what I'm saying for real. Please, we need to see you a little bit more.
I got you, but your time is up.
I know my time is up.
Your time is, I'm sorry.
Always get me up when it comes to that. But I did, that's what I was gonna say.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, now we open up for Commissioners', uh, comments. I'm starting with Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. Um, I did, um, represent the Commission a couple of times in the past week. Uh, one was at the AFL-CIO Workers Memorial. We talked a lot about workers today and, uh, businesses today. Um, so there is an annual memorial that is, uh, put forward by the AFL-CIO to recognize the individuals that were lost on the job over the last year. And so, I've, um, offered a resolution on behalf of all three Commissioners at that event, along with the state, the city. Um, so everybody was, um, there in honor of those who've lost their lives in the past year. So, I, I was glad to do that. Um, the other proclamation was related to the AAUP, the union up at UC. The, this is the group that organizes the professors at UC. They were celebrating their 50th anniversary, which is pretty impressive. Um, and so, they were the first to unionize professors in the state of Ohio. Um, and they are still doing that work. And some of us were there and saw, uh, the pushback related to SB, SB 5, or SB 6?
SB 5.
SB 5. Uh, we were there related to collective bargaining rights. And, uh, it was so important to have the folks in labor standing up collectively, I see Troy's in the back of the room, uh, collectively to say collective bargaining rights are important for everybody, uh, in their workplace. And so, um, they are still fighting that fight. There are portions of SB 5 that have moved forward in different, um, ways, a kind of a piecemeal approach. And so, uh, I, I offered, um, a proclamation on behalf of the Commission to the AAUP, recognizing their 50 years and celebrating their service uh, to the employees up at UC. Uh, and then beyond that, um, I did a couple of things related to youth, uh, this week. I went out to the Boys and Girls Club out on Glenway Avenue in Price Hill. Um, they had a group of teens, there must have been 20 of, uh, boys and girls that are members of that club, asking about what they needed, what they wanted from a Boys and Girls Club, but in a broader sense, what they needed from the community. And there were a bunch of elected officials there. They're building a new teen center. And so, that was kind of the impetus for the conversation. But it was really interesting to listen in on what young people are, are looking for. A, a lot of job coaching, a lot of job opportunities, um, mental health resources, um, support from the folks that are working at the Boys and Girls Club and in that building. And it became very clear that they're getting a lot of mentorship, uh, from the Boys and Girls Club staff. So, I, I wanted to thank them for the invitation and it was, it was really interesting to sit in. And then the second one was the UC STEM program that Sean Kelly organizes every year, um, up at UC. These are girls that are, um, interested in STEM careers and they come from all different schools. A lot of them are from the public schools, but some are from charters, some are from the archdiocese. And they had about 120 girls there. They all got lab coats. And they went around and did experiments that were provided by or sponsored by different corporations in Hamilton County, namely PNG, Duke, uh, EY, UC. So, it was this really great, um, corporate, um, event that benefited those 120 girls that are thinking about going into STEM careers. So, they, they did all kinds of cool stuff. Um, and so, I've mentioned to them that maybe Hamilton County in the future could be a partner because we've got lots of women in STEM working for Hamilton County, whether it's environmental services or, or, uh, recycling or, or air quality. Or we, we just, we had a panel just a month ago about this. And so, maybe it would be interesting to, uh, put that on the radar of these young people. So, they think about the county, uh, for a STEM career in the future. So, just, just a thought. Um, but it was a really great event and I, I thank Sean Kelly for, for the invitation to that. And then Commissioner, I guess you're gonna talk about River Roots. I, I was there as well, um, kicking off River Roots, uh, an event that's gonna happen next year to celebrate our history with music and food and, um, you know, the boats on the river and all the, all the cool things that, uh, you know, so many people at that event did not remember Tall Stacks. I vividly remember Tall Stacks. I just, I'm just that old. Uh, because I, I took my kids. I have photographs too, so a constant reminder. Um, but I remember hundreds of thousands of people coming for, um, Tall Stacks and the celebration of kind of our river heritage and all that stuff. So, um, anyway, it, it was interesting to, to know that people don't have that reference point. Um, but I'm excited that they've kind of revamped it. And I think it's become more meaningful and more inclusive of our history, everybody's history in Hamilton County. Um, so I'm looking forward to, uh, participating in whatever they've got coming to celebrate River Roots. Thank you.
Awesome. Commissioner Dumis?
Thank you so much. Just a few things. Um, I attended the Ohio, uh, One Ohio Foundation meeting, uh, yesterday. And it, it is so impressive. I wanna really thank the people on our staff that are pulling all that together. There are millions and millions of dollars that are going to go out for addiction response, prevention, education, housing. And it's not a simple job to figure out where that money should go. So, we're moving right along. Matter of fact, we're in front of other counties that are trying to make that decision. And also last week, I attended a leadership conference. Um, I learned a lot, a lot of spiritual uplifting, a lot of insight. Um, as far as it concerns the community and how we can do better to reach people. So, I really truly enjoyed that. Just a couple of other comments. I wanted to let our colleagues know, you probably know, but we need to also acknowledge Mental, Mental Health Month for this, uh, month. And also Asian Pacific Islander is celebrated this month. And also, um, this month is Jewish American Heritage Month. So, we have quite a few of groups to, to recognize. I know there are more, more things that are being acknowledged on different months, but I don't want us to, to miss, to miss that. Um, also, I'm just really deeply concerned about the report that came out, Cincinnati Bengals Report Card 2023. And I've brought it up before and I mentioned to Jeff, uh, some of the concerns that came out as, um, NFL players were surveyed about, uh, their perception of Paycor Stadium, their environment that they're in. I'm just very concerned that our young players that come and the ones that are there, they are treated with dignity and respect. They have an environment that is safe. Um, I don't want those young people that, we just got some new young men to come in. And I don't want them to think because they have all this money, uh, that they're receiving from the Bengals that they can accept any sort of treatment that is not the best, not quality treatment for them and just, uh, settle for it. Because I'm just letting them know and the public know, they don't have to settle for not having the best or the safest place to do their job. And so, um, as they ask the players, our specific players, um, the Bengals are one of three teams that do not provide dinner to their players. They are also one of two teams that do not provide vitamins. They are all, they are the only team that doesn't provide supplements. Additionally, players feel that they have some of the smallest hot cold tubs in the league. They have issues with the showers and the toilets not consistently working. And they are the only team that does not have outlets in their lockers to charge devices. Um, the players who responded to the survey also complained that there is nowhere warm and safe for mothers and kids to go during the game because the Bengals do not provide a family room, unlike the majority of teams. Players reported that wives have to sit on the public restroom floors to nurse their babies. And these are just examples that are consistent, uh, players' opinions with only 44% of the respondents, um, responding. But I'm just gonna stop it there. But you can get the report. It's online. But, um, they were given a grade, the Bengals were given a grade. Treatment families, F. Um, they ranked 29 out of 32 teams. Yeah. And then food service nutrition, F minus. So, we have these young and old players out there. Um, of course, they have to provide their own food whenever they're not playing or practicing. But I think there's a responsibility of the team to make sure these, uh, people are, uh, the players are getting what they need to be strong and healthy and not have injuries and things like that. The weight room, there was a B plus. They ranked 13. Uh, strength coaches, they got an A. They ranked 10. So, they're getting them strong so they can do the tasks that they were hired for, 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 where'd that come from? That was funny. Training room is a D. Um, training staff is an A. So, they're getting good training staff to get those bodies together. Um, and then locker room is a D. They ranked 25. And then the team travel was 20th cause they say they're not given the room they need to be able to be on the plane. So, I'm not gonna go through it. It's very interesting. And I'm just, uh, putting a, putting a plea out to the Cincinnati Bengals and Mike Brown and whoever else is in charge, uh, we can do better. And I know it's an internal fix that the county Commissioners can't necessarily do anything about, but come on, we gotta stop it. We gotta treat, uh, those young men, uh, better than that. We got to treat those young men better than that. So one other thing. Okay, so tomorrow I will be recognized as the University of Cincinnati Distinguished Social Worker for 2024. I announced that before and this will be the last time I announce it. But I just want to let all my supporters know that the building can only hold 2,000. So whoever was thinking about coming, you may rethink it because I don't want to be, you know, overcrowded in the room. So I'm just really proud of it because as I say, I just happen to be a social worker. That's a politician. And if it was up to me, every politician would take some social work courses for ethics and compassion and caring and all of that. And I'm just really humbled that the university has recognized me. And that was in my report.
Thank you. I've got a couple of things. I did attend the Mental Health and Advocacy, Addiction Advocacy Coalition, Public Officials Breakfast that they had. And it was good to see all those who are working in that space. In addition, I attended Closing the Health Gap and presented a proclamation on behalf of the board for Minority Health Month, which was last month. And I did attend that. Also, I was the keynote speaker at the 47th Annual Lucille Chenault Senior Citizen Disabled Persons Ball. I've been making that every year since I was old enough to go. They did stop during COVID, so this was a big deal to have all the seniors back together again. And I want to give a congratulations to Mrs. Doris Brown on another successful event. I presented a proclamation on behalf of the board to Linda Sherman. And it was just good to see all these senior citizens from all across Hamilton County on Tuesday down at the Convention Center. As they were down there, they were dancing, they were having a great time. And it was just great to see so many of them and the reception was so warm. 1,000 senior citizens came out. So I want to thank them for letting me be their keynote speaker. Want to give a shout out to P N Emerson Price, who was the emcee for the evening. And they just had a, they had a great time. The line dancers were there and they just had a great time. It was great to see Mrs. Mallory there and the entire Mallory family because Mr. William Mallory was one that helped start this effort going. So it was good to see him. So it was really great to see the senior citizens out. Also, it was mentioned earlier about the One Ohio meeting that I chair. And it is a lot of money that, and it is a great opportunity. And the people that's on that board, I want to thank them for agreeing to be on the board and also the staff because it is a navigation of trying to get the money. And I think the local component has done a much better job. We were able to get money out to the streets. But to get the state money, it's becoming almost discouraging in some regards because of all of the twists and turns. And at the end of the day, it's $4 million. It might be a $50,000 grant or $100,000 grant. So I do want to say that our group down here has been ahead of the state. We've been more coordinated together. And I'm glad we're doing them in two different tiers where the local money we have gotten grants, we're getting it out, we're on the streets while at the same time having to jump through all these hoops to get ready for the state money. So I wanted to just give a shout out there as well. In addition, I also want to say Jackie Taggart, Boyd, who is with the CVB, hosted all of the Hoteliers and USA Tour Guide folks. And they brought them to Cincinnati and throughout. And I was able to give them a tour of the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame to bring the tour buses and all of that. And they were very impressed. A USA Travel representative was here from USA Travel and even posted on the USA Travel Guide. I'm super excited about that. We have won several awards. The Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame now is award winning. We've said several Muse Awards. JRA has won gold in the category of design, augmented reality technology, diversity and inclusion. And we've got gold medals for that, gold awards rather. Also Messer won an award statewide for the design. Now we're on to the international award. We're on our way to international. Metro has won an award. So we have, we are award winning now. And we've got a lot of bus tours coming in and I was happy to give those tours. There's a big comedy show came in town on Saturday and people came and they were giving tours in the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. I'm hopeful, we are a sponsor of the Flying Pig Marathon. I saw that they're putting the porta potties up down there and they end at the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. So as a sponsor, I hope that they will encourage their folks as we end right at that level to go in and enjoy and have a good time. And we're working on a welcome sign to put in the Walk of Fame to welcome the Flying Pig Marathon folks. In addition to that, as was mentioned earlier, I was at the American River Roots Press Conference and did speak at the press conference. And they have, it is a remix or reboot, if you will, of Tall Stacks. And it was mentioned that, what'd you say, Vice President Dreyer? I said, I am that old, I'm going to say I am that young to remember Tall Stacks. But there are a lot of parents that remember Tall Stacks. I am battling right now the worst toothache you can imagine because I can't take any medicine until after the meeting. And so I'm in a lot of pain. But when I called the dentist, the first thing she said, her assistant says, I heard that Tall Stacks is coming back for a remix. I said, that sounds good, but I'm in a lot of pain right now. And she says, that's great news. I said, I'm on my way to the press conference and I'm in a lot of pain. So, but to hear her talk about that, her grandmother taking her down there. And she said now she'll be able to bring her children and her grandchildren down for the remix of River Roots as we celebrate America's birthday on the Ohio River. And so what I'm excited about, when you think about the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, which when I was the Deputy Director of Tourism, that was my job. I had to promote the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame is one of the things. But if you go from now the lakefront to now the Ohio River front and all the music in between, we now have a real connectivity. So I'm excited they're going to be doing some things at the Black Music Walk of Fame and all over the river. And so I'm excited about it. And obviously it's a lot of other people excited about it that will be planned for next year. Just some dates, I just want to remind people. On May 20th, it's Small Business Day, starts at 8:30 in the morning. You do have to register. It is free, but you do have to register. You can go to 513relief.org and hit the button for small business. Last time it was 850, I think we're at like 950. So maybe only 50 more slots left because 1,000 is the cutoff. We do have our Veterans Appreciation that will be on July 20th. So if you know any veterans, please start telling them right now. It's going to be a great American ballpark. I think it starts at 10:00 AM and it's going to be completely free. So we want people to have that. And then we've got 513 Day, which we're going to celebrate the 513 Relief Bus and all that it has done, helping over 20,000 people and partners who've done a great job. That's going to be on May 13th, that's a Monday, 8:30 AM at Memorial Hall. So those are some dates I just want people to put on their radar so that they don't say they missed it and I'll just keep letting them know. So that is, oh, I have one more thing. Commissioner Dumas brought up, first of all, I want to say what you brought up is very important. I think we should take it very serious. And considering that we're spending $39 million to do some upgrades, you just got to make sure we're doing the right upgrades because this board has expressed interest and the place is not accessible for people with disabilities. Yeah, it's on one floor, but they only want you to go in one entrance or two entrances. It's very, very far for people in wheelchairs and walkers and on a cane, people getting hip and knees replaced. You talked about the inside being able to have plug-ins and the showers and all that should be working. So I just want to make sure that our, at least in our investment, are we investing in the right things that will move us forward? So I appreciate you bringing that up. I want to clarify one thing I had talked about last week and it was about the WWE. And they ran with a story and they kind of got it half right, but not all the way right. I received a letter, an email on October 26th of 2023. So this is not a last minute situation. It says, the subject matter was Cincinnati potentially losing an economic opportunity to Cleveland. And the guy says, good evening, my name is Rick Onchino. I am the co-morning news anchor for Brian Combs on WLW Radio. I'm actually reaching out today as a Queens City resident who doesn't want to see a major economic opportunity go to Cleveland and not here. In addition to my duties at WLW, I am a pro wrestling journalist for a number of outlets, SB Nation, et cetera. There was a report that came out today and he said, saying that Cleveland was in the running for the WWE Summer Slam next August. He said, and they're looking at the Cleveland Browns stadium. As a lifelong wrestling fan and Cincinnati resident, I'm trying anything I can do to bring awareness to that fact that Cincinnati is losing out on potentially some big time revenue by continuously being passed up for the WWE events like Summer Slam. Now, the reason Summer Slam is bigger is because it's outdoors. And they said it brings about over 100,000 people. They'll be all over the banks and everything. And he talks about Columbus and Cleveland, as well as Indianapolis, Chicago, Detroit, Pittsburgh and Nashville. All these cities are driving distance from Cincinnati, but they've been able to host it. And so he asked, would I look into it? And I, I said I would. So I gave it to Mr. Ludo on October 26th, 2023. And the reason I said, I said, will you please look into this? And the reason I said, look into it is because in our contract, the Bengal contract that we have the lease, it says that we will have a third party that will handle bookings in that arena. To this day, I've been asking, who is the third party and where is the contract with the third party? I've never been produced a contract. Who is the third party that books our stadium? And I was told, well, the Bengals created another entity and they control the booking of the third party. I said, well, how is that a third party? So that's the reason it was sent over there, but it could be sent to the Convention and Visitors Bureau because we also fund them. But it does seem to me that they're, why was this not really gone after? And then last week, I didn't want to say anything, but administrator, we meet every week. We didn't meet this week because I'm in pain for my tooth. But we meet every week. So since October 23rd, we met every week of last year. And it was never said that they could not get it. No one said they reached out to Convention and Visitors Bureau. Did you go, that's their job to go get the stuff. So people come to me, well, this is how you put together bids. I'm very familiar. I've been the Deputy Director of Tourism. But we sent this over to, I said, please get to the appropriate people to look into this. Now, if we got people that they won't pick up phones for, but Cleveland got people and they are picking up phones, maybe we need to hire some people that, that's what I've been saying, who have contacts, who do this for a living. And so I don't have a problem. I would love to have the draft. People who know me, I love that, that's very important. I want to be very clear. We have to get a lease. We can't put the draft ahead of the lease. I would say, forget about the lease, we going after the draft. At the NFL, they still got to put some money up. We can't be held hostage. Well, we got to be, don't ask the NFL for no money because we want to host the draft. No, we need $100 million like everybody else. And I want to repeat, Denver is doing a fix-up and they're getting $100 million for fixing up. The others are doing $200 million for new builds. So why should Cincinnati be treated any less? That's why I'm in. So I wanted to put this out here. If we didn't get the Summer Slam this time, Cleveland getting Summer Slam and they got the NBA All-Star Game. Why do we have to be down to just two concerts a year? And we don't even know what's going on over there. And the contract says we're supposed to have a third party that everybody knows, that everybody agrees to, both parties, the county and them. And that person is supposed to go out and get concerts, get these type of events because that's what they do for a living. So I wanted to clarify that. Where people say, she don't know what she talking about? You got to take a bid, we understand a bid. I want to know why the CVB did not bid on this. I want to know why Cleveland got a return phone call for their stadium and we got no return. Ain't nobody taking our calls. Well, we need to hire some people, just have some respect. Don't keep hiring people that ain't got no contacts. We got a stadium that's sitting there empty. And two times a year, a concert ain't going to get it. I want more. So, and it's in the contract. Anybody want to do it, they can read. And that contract, I want to say, should be put online. I think the contract should be, the lease should be put online so every citizen in Hamilton County can read it. And I'm willing to take whatever I'm saying to the ballot. It ain't me. Well, at least you read, you don't have to debate me. Let's just put it on the ballot, see what the people say. But that lease should be up on our website where people can download it, read it for yourself. And you'll see a section that says, we're supposed to have an independent party to book events and bring in revenue to these stadiums. And that's why I brought it to attention and I want to give the date again. The date again, so people don't say, she just came up with that. I sent this on October, I received a gentleman's email on October the 26th of 2023. And once again, I don't think it's enough to say, well, the Bengals made a phone call, nobody answered. But why'd they pick up for the Browns? Somebody's answering telephones. That's why we need Live Nation or somebody who does these major events, who know how to get to the people. And also, I don't know why it wasn't sent to the Convention and Visitors Bureau to put in a bid for this. So, and I'm expecting us to still put in a bid for this for the future so that we can bring in, we want everything, everything we can inside the stadium. So I know we had something inherited bank, they have that all the time. That's the indoor thing, that's smaller, even though they have some great wrestlers. I'm talking about this one that needs, that looked, that's going to be at Cleveland, I believe Cleveland Browns stadium, he said. I want something at our stadium. So just wanted to clarify that because I know they just picked up a soundbite and ran with it. But this is what really happened. I sent it over there, not for the Bengals to make a phone call. I sent it over to Mr. Ludo to get the Convention and Visitors Bureau or who does the booking at Paycor Stadium. That's who I said, to go after, to try to go after this. So those were the things that I wanted to make a clarification of. All right, Mr. Ludo, any, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, could I make one additional comment? I do this quite often, but as you brought, as you brought this up, it reminded me, I'd be remiss if I did not give honor to Lucille Chenault because I was a green social worker in 1977. And she was my first social work mentor for about three years. And I remember her vividly because she was just full of style and honesty and classiness. And she taught me the first techniques of being a good social worker. So I wanted to give honor to her. So thank you.
Thank you. She would have been proud on Tuesday to see all those seniors line dancing and doing it in style. You know, she always had that style and those women were, they were dressed too. You know, she, she always had that style and those women were, they were dressed too down there. So, all right, Mr. Ludo.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, just on the note about, uh, social workers, as the board is aware, uh, we have quite a few social workers and folks, uh, who have social work degrees who work for the county. Uh, and I just say that from the perspective that we are getting ready to, uh, go into Public Service Recognition Week, uh, which is the week of May 5th through the 11th. So whether it's social worker, uh, or anyone doing any work for Hamilton County, I just wanted to in advance, um, recognize everybody who does work for the county, helps this organization, uh, helps the public in general and helps build this community. And not just in the, in Hamilton County, uh, but in public service anywhere, uh, throughout this region or, or the country, wanted to thank them, uh, for their service. And on that note, um, I wanted to mention that, uh, I believe today, um, speaking of, uh, public service and folks doing good stuff in the county, uh, we have representatives from county facilities who are at the Midwest Sustainability Summit, who are receiving the Environmental Impact Award, uh, at the Midwest Sustainability Summit. So I want to, uh, congratulate and thank Ralph Linney and all of his crew for everything they do. They're getting this award specifically because, uh, of the, uh, their stewardship and everything they have done within their buildings, especially as it relates to energy conservation, uh, which this board has, uh, been, uh, very forward leaning into, um, helping them achieve those goals through funding various projects for energy performance contracting, et cetera. Uh, since nine, 1998, they have saved 32 million dollars, uh, in taxpayer resources based upon the energy conservation measures that they have put in place. Uh, just one, uh, interesting note, 800 Broadway is actually the longest running, um, Energy Star government owned Energy Star award winning, uh, building in the state of Ohio. Uh, so they, uh, we've, we've done a lot of great work in the environmental field. Uh, we're actually, a little bit of a teaser for the board. We're actually working right now on a way to encapsulate and tell that story a little bit better. We'll be running some things by the board here shortly on it. But, uh, just wanted to, uh, thank and congratulate, uh, Ralph Linney as director and all of his, uh, team at, uh, county facilities for the work that they did. And I think, um, commissioners, we've addressed by leave one already, so I don't have any additional by leave, so, um.
Well, thank you, uh, thanks for bringing that up and, uh, to Ralph and his team. Um, you know, a lot of people are talking about green and green energy. And what I've found is the county is, is not new to this, but been true to this before. It was a popular thing to talk about. So, um, we've got, uh, back in the air, we've got a, a shelf for the awards. We might have to build two or three more shelves. We keep winning awards, uh, but congratulations to his team. We're very proud. Um, back to the agenda, then we go to regular agenda. Item number one, we have the engineers department. How are you?
Very good, thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Todd Long, Chief Deputy Engineer. Today we have one item. It's a resolution that will allow us to put Hillside Roadlands Stabilization Project 151916 out to bid. This project is located in Delhi Township. Um, if approved, this will give us a bid opening date of the 30th of the month, this month. The engineer's estimate is 4.708 million dollars. And what's, I'd like to highlight in this particular project is I read through a few of these, uh, partners that we have is the different funding sources. So this is a good collaboration project where we're bringing in a number of different sources. Uh, so the first is the Ohio Public Works Commission grant that was, um, applied for by Delhi Township. That will provide up to a maximum of 2.478 million dollars for the project. Uh, again, uh, another grant that we were able to kind of pile on here is through SORDA. Uh, the engineer's office applied for that. Uh, that will give us a maximum if, if awarded for the project for 2.124 million dollars. And then the Greater Cincinnati Water Works is also contributing to this project in the amount of 542,084.07. And the city of Cincinnati will also be contributing through their stormwater management utility, 250,000 dollars, uh, toward the project. The estimated completion date will be in December of 2024. That's all I have.
I'll open it up. Any questions or comments, Vice President Dreehouse?
What part of Delhi is this in?
This is located very close to Anderson Ferry and slightly to the west of Anderson Ferry at the intersection of Hillside and Anderson Ferry. So it's very close.
Okay, is there a landslide in that location?
Hillside Avenue, or Hillside Road, rather, is, uh, is very prone to, um, slides. Uh, there is an active, we've been monitoring this for a number of years. It's taken a little while to get this project under, uh, under, um, completion and design, but we're very happy to be able to move forward with it. So yes, there are active landslide slides.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, thanks for the, uh, presentation. I'm glad that we're leveraging funds the way we are. It sounds like we may have less than maybe two, uh, one point. How much are we putting in through our funding? I said 4.5, you calculated, but.
With, with all the grants and the city and the, and waterworks, uh, we do not have any money that we're going to be placing from the Road and Bridge Fund into this project if it, if it moves forward. So this is a unique project in that sense.
We covered all of it. Okay, great. That's all. All right, I'll make a motion to approve item number one.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Mr. Ludo?
Uh, thank you, commissioners. Um, item number two is simply a resolution extending the contract with the University of Cincinnati uh, for the data, uh, and, uh, monitoring and analysis related to our QRT programming. So this, um, actually extends the, the grant or the contract through September. Uh, for this, the total amount you see on here is 130,468. That's the total amount of the, of the original contract. It's actually a no cost extension for what we're doing here. So, uh, I do have folks here that can, uh, Abby Fritsch and, uh, Lisa Webb, who can answer additional questions if there are any. Um, but, um, as it is, it's an extension of the time with UC to do this data monitoring and analysis.
Okay, I'll open it up. Any comments or questions, Vice President Dreehouse? Commissioner Dumas?
I just want to make sure there's no conflict on my end since I love the University of Cincinnati right now. I'm good?
I think you're good.
Besides wearing their colors.
Right.
I'm just kidding, it's good.
Red and black, yeah.
Okay. Uh, item number two, um, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Okay, consent agenda, Mr. Ludo?
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, I, consent agenda is fairly brief today. Item number three is Budget Adjustment Number 15. This is for crisis stabilization grants within mental health, uh, firearms certification and training, um, for the clerk of courts. Uh, this is appropriating, uh, funding for Veterans Appreciation Day, as well as appropriation of planning dollars for running the water line related to the Hamilton County Regional Safety Project or Complex. Um, item number four is a reconciliation of the Board of Elections Reserve, uh, 58,459. Item number five is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Ford Bronco Sport in the sheriff's office, 28,914. Item number six is resolution authorizing purchase of an F-350, Ford F-350 in the Engineers Department, 49,250. Uh, the remainder of the items are JFS items. Item number seven is a resolution in agreement with These Place LLC, uh, for Independent Living Services, 500,000. Item number eight is an agreement with Glad House, uh, on behalf of the Department of Job and Family Services, uh, for Prevention Services, 200,000. Item number nine, resolution, uh, uh, authorizing renewal number one of the agreement with Beach Acres Parenting Center for Foster Care Services, 3.21 million. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing renewal, renewal number one of the agreement with Specialized Alternatives for Families and Youth, uh, for Foster Care Services, 2.1 million. Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing renewal number one with focus on youth and job and family services for foster care services, 1.8 million. Item number 12 is a resolution authorizing renewal number one with National Youth Advocate Program for Foster Care Services, 5.45 million. Uh, we then have, uh, three travel, uh, or, uh, an item number 13 requesting authorization to travel at the county's expense. One employee from the coroner's office to Cleveland, Ohio, and one employee from the auditor's office traveling to Nashville, Tennessee. And that is your consent agenda. Commissioners, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I'll open it up. Vice President Dreehouse, anything?
Um, yes, something on item number three, the budget adjustment. Two things really. The first is I just want to highlight that the work is continuing related to the, um, regional safety complex, moving forward on that, trying to get, uh, the gun range moved out of the Lincoln Heights area up to the Col Rain facility. So I'm glad to see things moving along. Um, the other one is a question related to the Mental Health and Recovery Services item. Do you know what that is for specifically?
Uh, I know it's specifically related to cri, to crisis stabilization grants, uh, within mental health. I don't know, Lisa, if you have any additional information, do not. Commissioner, happy to follow up with you.
Yeah, would you, it's just, it's a large dollar amount. I was just curious to know what exactly that's going for, but yeah.
Happy to.
A later date is fine. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Commissioner Dumas?
No comments.
Uh, I just, I wanted to just, item number three, um, wanted to also highlight the Veteran Service Appreciation Day is in there. I know we had passed it, now we're getting the money encumbered. Um, and then on the, um, safety complex, regional safety complex, gun range, um, can we get an update on when we looking at a shovel in the ground?
Sure, so, uh, regarding a shovel in the ground, um, uh, I'll have to be a little bit more, um, preliminary than that at this point, but as the board is aware, uh, we, uh, have passed through all of our environmental check time, uh, which was a requirement of the federal government that we couldn't even issue a bid until that time was done. We're now through that. We're in the final review of our, of our, uh, uh, invitation to bid for the first phase of construction, which should go, that, that ITB should go out mid-May as, as was planned.
Okay, can you, but can you update us? Not today.
Yeah, as we get the bids back in, as we get time, we'll keep you updated on the timeline. I have said that I've hoped for sometime late summer for, for groundbreaking, but we'll, uh, we'll definitely keep you updated on it.
Okay, thank you.
Could I make a comment on that? Uh, as we talk about.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. So as we look at the regional safety complex, we are talking about the closing of the gun range in, uh, Lincoln Heights. And so that will correlate with that. So this is a big deal. So, thank you, that's all.
Awesome. Okay, I make a motion to approve items three through 13 and accept for the record.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
And no further bids, I have a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.